For the living to survive in the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Trustee Tremblay, yeah, Trustee, we're going to church here.
Trustee Tremblay.
Here.
Trustee Garrett.
Here.
Mayor Martin.
Here. Motion to adjourn to minutes, November 4th, 2013, we have a board meeting.
Still move?
Have a second?
A second.
Any discussion on these? I have a question for you. I need to, when is the petitions available for?
For the elections?
Yeah.
On January 1st?
Is it 1st or 18th?
It's first week in January, we can be pissed off.
So it'll be before our next board meeting?
Yes.
Any additions to the motions? Discussion on the minutes? Those in favor of approval signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Question carries. Presentation of petitions, communications, notices, general question period, members of the community?
I'd like to comment.
Sure.
This is, to be honest, I think. Just want to read a prepared statement.
Okay, sure.
I'd like to read this statement regarding the appeal of the ZBA decision regarding my chickens. Much of what I have to say, I've already dispensed with Mayor Martin privately, but I thought there was value in sharing that with the entire group and on the record. As I'm sure you're aware, I was unsuccessful in my Article 78 petition. I suspect this has more to do with my inexperience with the process as a layperson than the merits of my case. I also assume that by now the village's attorney has informed you that I've initiated a secondary appeal with the appellate division of New York State Supreme Court.
That's the first word here in this.
So we're doing an additional appeal?
The next step.
I'd like to share with you my motivations for bringing this appeal and speak about the implications of this appeal and provide some suggestions as to how the village may choose to respond. I have several motivations for choosing to continue the appellate process. First and foremost, I feel that I've been done a disservice and injustice by the village. The zoning code expressly permits accessory uses and explicitly includes keeping domesticated animals among those uses considered as among those uses considered to be accessory. The notion that the ZBA could completely disregard corroboration from Black's Law Dictionary and suggest that chickens are not domesticated animals still confounds me. Secondly, I have a moral obligation to my family to protect my family's property rights. I'm acting as both a husband and a father to aggressively protect my family pets. Lastly, I'd like to teach my daughter that this is a nation and a community of laws where justice can be had even for those persons not willing or able to invest thousands of dollars in attorney services. What I'm not motivated by is spite. I really do want to make the village a better place. That's why I donate my time to the zoning board appeals. There is an upside to this process for the village. It's my hope that we can emerge from this process with more transparent and unambiguous laws interpreted by a more skilled zoning board, which is less susceptible to appellate challenge. I expect that continuing with the appellate process may bring renewed interest in modified zoning code regarding domesticated animals. I'd like to point out that the existing code is not completely unrestricted. It only permits uses which are accessory to residents. That is, it would be difficult to argue that a single cow capable of producing as much as six gallons of milk per day is there exclusively for personal use and is therefore not accessory. Also, if a more restrictive law were enacted without accommodation for pre-existing uses, i.e. grandfathering, it could subject the village to financial liability. Existing case law has shown that such action can be construed as a taking by the municipality of property goods, opportunities, and equipment associated with that newly prohibited use. It would be irresponsible not to weigh the financial risk of such a decision or its litigation. That is, I'm not the only one in this village with pre-existing animal uses. It is most certainly this board's prerogative to oppose my appeal and as well pursue local ordinance changes, but it's also your prerogative to not pursue them. I would hope that you would carefully weigh the costs and the possible benefits associated with seeking policies with very limited public support. If you have any questions about this appeal, its legal basis, I would be happy to answer any of your questions or schedule a meeting when there's a better time. I thank you for listening.
Well, thank you. I'm sure we'll be in conversation with Mr. Marshall and we'll see, I'm sure we'll be back together again, you know, and discuss this. And I do want to thank you for your service on the zoning board. You are a very knowledgeable member, one that I place a great deal of respect towards. Do you have any questions, Mr. Marshall?
No, no, I don't understand what's going on.
Thank you. Report for Mr. Pedro, Code Enforcement?
Sorry, I'm late. Cold out there. You've got my report. The only other thing other than what's on there is Mr. De La Frange has submitted his permit, building permit application with the plan, and I've looked at it. It's all right, and I spoke with the mayor today about our next. Well, I guess, so what can we do here to move this along? And what I suggested is that because he's applying for a building permit, I don't really have any grounds to deny him the building permit. But a building permit is generally good for a year, so this could lag for another year, for lack of better terms here. What I would like to do is attach an order to remedy along with the building permit. In other words, the house is in such a state that something has to be done with it, he can't do it until he gets a building permit. But the order of remedy would be for a specific amount of time where he would have to show certain progress, you know? My feeling is that a month from tonight should be enough time to accomplish, at least enough to secure the outside of the building from, you know, openings or whatever. Take the roof off, replace what needs to be replaced, board up the windows, the doors, then the interior stuff he can do when he wants. But just to issue the building permit, given how long this has taken, and I don't think, I mean, it took the architect a while to draw the drawing, so there was some time lost with that. Took longer than what I anticipated anyway. But I think you have to hold him to some sort of timeframe here to get this done, otherwise this is just going to sit there and complaints are going to keep coming, and you all know how that goes, so. So that's my recommendation with that, put an order to remedy along with the building permit with a timeframe.
I'm sorry, I can make the reference, but you have the information that Mr. De La Frange has provided in correspondence number five. Like to the mic button, this is a quick update. We felt that this was, from a legal standpoint or from a, you know, from the village's liability issue standpoint, that this was the way to go. Mike will be able to go into the building once he issues this permit, go into the building and inspect.
Correct.
We'll get a report from him on what he feels is, what he feels is the important aspects of this, how this should be addressed. I know that you've been at this a long time.
And the engineer's concern was that if the back portion wasn't remodeled, in other words, the roof taken off and rebuilt before snow came, that that was in danger of collapse. And that's a serious issue with me, so that's why I would attach the order to remedy.
Sure, sure.
Mayor? You know, we have a copy of the application for permit, but as far as in the drawings, what does it include? Is it, you know, replacing windows, replacing the roof and back part of the structure?
The back part of the structure, there's a section in the drawing where the architect identified that has to be completely removed and rebuilt. That's the roof section.
Yep.
The rest of the house is basically going to be renovated. He may put new windows in if there's some were blown out, I'm not exactly sure. But that's the, the biggest concern is the back portion. The front, well, there's an opening where he took some stuff out, but that needs to be boarded up, put a door, a window, whatever he wants to put in there.
Because I, I agree if we can make it specific that the building is, you know, buttoned up, shored up, and safe.
Yeah.
And I don't think it even, you know, say that it's. Seemed up appearance-wise for neighbors, in addition, but the rest can be remodeled as he goes.
It's just the structural issues that are my concern with winter coming. If you get a foot of wet snow on that existing back structure, according to the engineer, that, that's at risk of collapse, so that's serious.
I spoke with him a couple of weeks ago, and he told me the permit was, the application was approved, you, and he assured me that he was ready to start as soon as he had the permit.
Yeah.
And he goes to that, we're shoring that up.
Well, we, we got it here December 2nd. I was on vacation last week, so I got it today, so, you know, two days later, but that's my recommendation anyway.
I agree with that. At least, at least get that building, you know, shored up and safe and everything enclosed.
It's just been a long time. Mike, I think you and I talked about this earlier, and if you could enlighten the board what our next step is after this, if he doesn't comply with that.
Well, if he doesn't comply with that within a month, there's not significant progress made, I think that you have to go down the route of condemnation and, you know, basically have the building torn down if there's no, no progress on it.
Can we pull that permit?
I believe so, yes. Well, I'll have to talk with Mr. Marshall, but I, I believe the permit is conditional on the order to remedy. You know, he has to get so much done in a certain amount of time.
Mike, I'm here, it says under 14 is estimated cost of construction $998. So when this blows that number away, is he going to say, well, due to financial constraints, I cannot continue at this time, I need an extension because it's way over my $998 budget?
No, I don't believe that has any bearing on, on the permit.
I got a bedroom under construction right now that's gone way beyond that.
Usually those numbers are used for surveys. The college used to track, you know, building in the county. The Washington tracks it through the Census Bureau, how much money is spent. Building permits, at one time they were based on actual dollar amount of work being done, but that was so fraudulent that, you know, we did away with that. It's by a square foot now. So the, the building permit fee is so much a square foot for the entire building. I don't care if it's $900 or $900,000.
Okay, because that doesn't cover.
No.
Part-time hours in one week.
And back to the drawings, the drawings strictly just for that, that roof, or is this including?
No, it's the whole house.
So it's including the remodeling or the reconstruction?
Yeah, it shows the rooms, they're probably the way they are now, but he may have added one or reconstructed something in the, I'm not sure, but it's got all the walls and stuff.
I don't think it means anything. I don't, it doesn't, it doesn't hold value.
Well, it just kind of pulled me away, so that's what I'm just saying, based on how things have been progressing, is this going to be in, by agreeing to this, is this going to be something he can say, well, you know, I only budgeted for $998 and?
No, I don't, I don't believe so.
I just want to make sure.
Well, that shouldn't have anything to do with the permit. Shouldn't the permit end, you know, the 30-day?
Yeah, hold it in, let's see the permit.
So. And I didn't know what this meant under his signature, for Spectrum Rentals LLC and not personally.
Well, he's, I think he's set up a limited liability corporation.
Okay.
And as the chief executive officer.
Right, the permit's in Spectrum's name.
He would sign on behalf of the Spectrum Rentals residence as the personal owner.
Okay, so he is the personal owner.
And you can only go after the company, not him? Right.
You have to go after the company.
30 days.
Well, that's what I thought. Within a month, the, the building's not that big, that, that can come down and be reframed, and just putting a metal roof on it, whatever.
Well, just to fix the roof.
10 feet of snow.
Close up the hole in the front and make it at least a little more. The appearance a little more.
Yeah, it's.
There has to be an effort within 30 mon, I mean, 30 days.
You know, the neighbors are complaining, as they should, as a.
It's going to be secured in 30 days.
Yes.
Secure and enclosed.
Bad effort, secure.
And enclosed. If there's any windows that are blown out, it should be replaced.
Yeah.
My, my concern is, it's been four years. We've had all summer, we've had all fall, and now we're winter. Storms are coming.
Yeah, so we're all concerned about it.
And, and by the January meeting, we need to be prepared to do the next step if this isn't remedied because I, that's you.
Thank you.
I, I just have visions of this still being a burned-out building next summer.
But no sugar plums?
I have no sugar plums.
Sorry, so.
I think we all agree with that.
Yeah, we all have the same feelings.
Yeah.
We're, we're hoping you can go through with this.
I, I think that the village board has been very patient, but more than that, I think the neighbors to the property have been more, more patient than anybody because they're looking at it. They're living next to it.
It's good every day. Is the board in agreement with Mike?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, I'll issue that tomorrow.
Pretty good, thank you. Anything else?
Um, the only thing I was going to add is I'm going to send an accompanying letter, basically explaining the order to remedy, that he has a month and what we're expecting, just to make it perfectly clear.
In, in that letter, will you also be explaining if this is not met, what the next steps will be?
Well, basically, I generally use language like further legal action may result.
Okay.
I mean, I don't want to, you know, I don't want to threaten anybody, but give him the benefit of the doubt, let him get his project going. He's got the permit, but get it going.
Just for the board's knowledge, Mike, do you expect anything to be different tomorrow night at the town board meeting with Mr. Cooper and Bernier and Carr?
No.
Is there anything that you expect to?
No.
No?
Other than, I mean, he's there for the, the.
The 60-day.
Yes, drawing a blank here. Yeah, for the, the water project. I spoke with Larry this afternoon, and it wasn't anything new that was supposed to be coming out.
Okay, so there was no public opposition or anything?
No, not yet, not, not that I've seen or heard.
Well, I'll be there. All right, anything else for Mike? Let's, you want to go?
Doesn't matter.
Let's skip down to old business here before I give my report.
I'd make him wait.
We've all been talking with this, with this VAS with EJ Prescott, and I asked Mike Metcalf to attend this meeting to, to go over some of the highlights of this, of this agreement. And I'd like the board's approval to sign this contract if we find it to be of benefit to the village, and I think, I mean, everybody knows that I strongly support this because I believe it's best for the village. So, Mike, go ahead.
Sure. My name is Mike Metcalf. For those who don't know me, I live right down the road in Rouse's Point. My wife and I moved here from Central Vermont.
Thank you.
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
I've been with EJP over 10 years. Before that, I worked, I owned my own construction business, and I worked for an independent consulting engineering firm. I've got a bachelor's degree in civil engineering from Union College, Schenectady. Basically, what I would like to do is, if you guys would approve this, is that I'll explain this VAS program. If you, you've read it, certainly, hopefully, it's somewhat self-explanatory, but the VAS program is, is an inventory management program. Where upon the execution of a contract, we come in and we take 100% physical inventory on everything that we would normally sell you as the Village of Champlain for Public Works-related supplies. We would then, once we've got an inventory, we would sit down with Mike and say, okay, this is what you've got. This stuff here, we don't even think is serviceable. We recommend that you take it to the scrapyard, get rid of it, it's junk, get what you can for it, but this is what you need, we think you should do. Of course, it's all his decision. This stuff here is serviceable, and if you want to keep it, and if you think you've got a use for it, fine. This stuff over here is serviceable, and you've got a lot of it, and if you want to give some of it back, we will take it back and give you full purchase price for it. We will pay you market price, the going rate for what you've got. Off the top of my mind, the hundreds of feet of culvert to sit up at the wastewater plant right now, they were, it was bought for a project years ago that never materialized. There's no reason that the Village of Champlain should be sitting on 400 feet of 12- and 15-inch culvert up that wastewater plant. It's perfectly sellable, perfectly usable. We would come in and say, geez, Mike, you probably use four or five sticks a year, why don't you keep that, we'll give you credit for the rest of it, and we'll haul it off. So, that's the first step. Secondly, we come in, we set up an inventory management system on his computer back there. It allows him to track in real time what comes in, what goes out. That way he has real-time access. He doesn't have to scratch his head and say, geez, Jimmy, I think you ought to go back there and check, or I'll go back and check to see what we've got. Or if he comes in at night on a water break, he can just sit, go into his desk, say, yep, this is what we need, I've got it out there. You can even go so far as to make locations and put that in the software. We would provide that at no charge. We would also come in and give him as much training as he needs to be able to actively run that system. Within that system, he can not only see what he's got, he can also see what it is in stock status within all of EJP land. In other words, we have 70s odd VAS customers scattered from the tip of Maine to the tip of Indiana, almost Lexington, Kentucky. So they're scattered all throughout the eastern United States, plus we have 29 locations in that same area. So there's about 100 or so locations that he can look at, and he can say, geez, I really need this. He can call me up and say, Mike, this part's in Lima, Ohio, can you get it for me? I say, geez, thanks, now I know where to go, at least I don't have to, you know, it's, it's just a partnership, he's able to, be able to look for that. I already went over the taking back the overstocked inventory. Should you have a project, a large project that goes on and you buy material under this VAS contract, there's odd, there's no restocking fee. Normally, as any vendor would do, there's typically a restocking fee if you buy stuff and then bring it back and wait a date. It costs money for me to come back and pick it up and transport it back as part of this contract that we waive that restocking fee. Your prices are locked in for one year. We lock in from April to April. So the sliding price scale, the way we do it is, we typically go in about 10% above what the market cost is in the spring, and that's how we establish our price scale. But depending on factors within the markets, typically by the time the next April rolls around, you're buying stuff at 10% less than market cost. In some extreme cases, such as the years of Hurricane Katrina and Tropical Storm Irene, because of the damage that was done throughout the country, particularly the eastern half of the country, we saw our VAS customers paying in excess of 50% less on some products. So, locking in, locking in for a year is typically good business if you can, it's like locking in your oil prices. You know, if you get them at the, get them at a decent price, you can, you can really make out pretty well. The services we provide, we provide 24/7 emergency service. You pretty much get that now. I live four miles down the road, so I mean, if he needs something, he knows he can call me. But if I shouldn't have, if I'm not there, he can call the next person in line, and trucks will start rolling probably from, we've got a salesman that lives just over in Highgate, Vermont. So he would start rolling, and we will make sure that you're serviced, no service fees whatsoever. When we make up your inventory, we will, you will decide what you want to keep out there. Those will be called your A items. Those are items that you have on your shelf all the time. We will never let them fall below a certain amount. That's my job. That's what I, I would come here once a week and make sure that. If he's used something, he enters it in his computer, when I come in, the first thing I'm going to do is I'm going to go to his computer, get my, or his, he's going to have a printout. I'm going to pull up his printout and say, okay, he used this, 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 and this. He started out with 10, he's got a minimum reorder point of three. If he's below three, I know that I've got to get on the phone and make sure that he gets that reorder point back up. Should something wild happen and he uses everything up, we pledge as part of our contract, our service to you, that we will have your A items here in two hours or less. So should something catastrophic go wrong on Ridge Road, which, you know, is about a yearly occurrence in my experience. You know, and you need three 8-inch repair bands, and you've got two that are sitting out on the shelf, and they're your A items. Well, I'm hopping in the truck and I'm going to go get you one and bring it back. What I'll probably do is pull one out of my garage and bring it up here, but anyway. Now we'll get into some of the biggies. That's more of the inventory management scheme. These are just, these are side, they're not really, don't have anything to do with inventory, but they're key selling factors. 10-year full replacement warranty. It's not just a 10-year warranty. It is a 10-year warranty, but it's a 10-year replacement warranty. So in other words, if Mike buys a hydrant main valve rubber, it's a little piece of rubber about this big, and it sits down in the very bottom of the hydrant, and when you shut that hydrant, it's, pulls up against the brass ring and actually forms the seal and makes the hydrant stop flowing. If that should be bad, and he's got to go out with his crew and fix that thing in the middle of the winter, we not only will give him another hydrant main valve rubber, but we will pay the cost of him and his crew going out there to fix that problem because we sold him that part and it was found faulty. If we sell him a curb stop, like what I dropped off three of today, and there's something wrong, and that's a buried shut-off for your water service, and that should be bad, and he's got to go out there and he's got to get the town or somebody to come and dig that up, if he doesn't have somebody, we will pay the excavation cost plus the cost of him and his crew to go out there and fix that. So it's a 10-year warranty, but it's pretty important that you realize it's a 10-year replacement cost warranty.
Even from our water-eating-away things?
Your water-eating-away things.
Well, our water and torus leak has such a high iron content.
Right.
It really eats things up quickly.
Yeah, I mean, I've not, I've not experienced a problem with most of the stuff we sell corroding in 10 years.
Just kidding.
Yeah. Right, standard, standard inventory, standard practice is a one-year warranty. When you, when they come through with this, with this new water line project, and Bernie Carr writes the specs, you will see there's a one-year parts and workmanship warranty. Well, we're going to give you 10, so, at replacement cost. We also come in, oh, there's a week's use of leak locating equipment. That would probably come with me since I'm going to be running it. But if you wanted to use it, I'd more than willing to train you, but I would be willing to come and do it for you. That, I bill out with that leak locator at $600 a day. So it's about a $13,000 piece of equipment, and it utilizes listening loggers, data loggers, that are about 2,000. and it utilizes listening loggers, data loggers that are about $2,500 apiece and they're junk after two years. So, yeah, they just wear out. So, we have to recapture the money somehow. So, that's why I said I bill out the $600 a day with that piece of equipment. And you get a week's worth of it for free. So, that's 3,000 bucks right there. And you can, you don't have to use it. It's great to have, if you have a leak, I can come out and pretty much pinpoint a leak anywhere. But it's also, if you don't have a leak, but you're concerned about water usage, you can actually just, we can go out some night at 10, 11, 12 o'clock at night and drop this thing on, a few valves and a few hydrants. And you could say, boy, I've got water flowing here, what if I got water flowing at midnight? You know, so you can say, ah, I am using some water from here to here. So, it's not only a great service tool, but it's a great management tool. That's provided. We'll give you one 10-hour OSHA safety course. We have two certified OSHA trainers within our company and they will travel here and they can train up to 30 people in one session. So, not only can you train anybody in the village, but you can invite people from the town, surrounding towns and villages and they can come here or we can host it wherever you want it to. It's a pretty good value. New York and Vermont are the last two states on the eastern whole part of the country that do not require, if you are anywhere near an excavation or a utility, any utility work, New York and Vermont are the last two states that don't, do not physically require every person that is on job to carry a 10-hour OSHA card. And I would expect, there's our great legislators in Albany, that that's not far down the road. You're gonna start seeing all municipalities require their guys to have 10-hour cards. And you can have one training per year. So, if you should happen to hire somebody, somebody leaves, you get somebody new, we'll have, we'll send a guy down from Maine and he'll be untrained. That's provided. You do get a rebate program. It's not, it's great for the customers to buy a half a million dollars worth of stuff, but it does accumulate after a while. You get a half a point for every hundred dollars spent with us. So, in your case, you'd get a couple hundred points a year. That, those points can be redeemed either for a credit to your account. What I've found that most of our customers do to have these points is they turn them in every couple of years and they get their guys some Carhartt jackets and pants and stuff like that at Christmas time. But it's there.
So, you can roll them over and redeem late?
Yes, absolutely, yep, yep. And we've got a couple of other things. You guys don't have a public utilities commission in New York, do you? Okay. The New England states have PUCs and they have to have a report generated by all municipalities every year for material used, dollars on hand inventory. We do have, that's part of the, it's built into your soft, the package, the software package. And we will provide GIS mapping services. You folks usually, I don't know if you guys are familiar with GIS mapping, but typically, you've got shut-offs and valve boxes. You've got water valve locations in your streets and you've got shut-offs to all your houses on the lawns or in the sidewalk or something like that. Typically, in years past, you've got books that are in here and they've got little lines drawn from trees and from sides of buildings. That's how you locate it. Well, unfortunately, trees die and fall down, buildings burn, get torn down or moved. Prominent landmarks go away. What we do is we come out and we shoot them in with a satellite GPS and hand over a copy of it to your superintendent. So, that way, it's there forever and it's something that can be handed down through time. That feature is also included with this.
Mike, so, I wanna clarify that, 'cause I am familiar with the mapping.
Yes.
Do we come through as part of this contract and map what we?
No, 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 no. If, if, if we sell you something, okay, we sell you a hydrant, we sell you a valve and we, at the, under the, under the VAS program, we will come and shoot it in and, and provide its location.
That's what I wanted to clarify.
Yeah, no, we're not gonna come in and do your entire system.
Oh, can you?
What's that?
Can you?
For a price, absolutely.
We spent $300,000 on a grant and we couldn't get it.
Yeah, if you, yeah, I mean, if you bought as part of the, for instance, this water line project and somehow the materials got bought under the contract, then we would shoot them out.
There is gonna be a lot here in the village with this, with this water program that's gonna take place here in this village. You know, they would, they would take care of a lot of that.
Because we really are the ax next to the oak tree with the bed.
Yeah, I, I was, I spent some time as a-
Some of them look like this.
Yeah. I was a, I was a water superintendent over in South Burlington and I had 9,000 customers, 9,000 end users, 9,000 houses, I should say, water services. And we had books of ties that were in a milk crate. And some of them, I mean, was the rock on the lawn. And it's like, what rock and, and what part of the rock? Because you go out there and there's five rocks on the lawn and they're all this big around. So, I mean, we could be off, even if you picked the right rock, you can still be off two feet, so. So, anyway, I'll wrap this up real quick. If, in your also your packet, you have a VAS value calculator. Looks like this. I actually sat down, finally struck me at about 5:00 this morning to sit down and put this together. This is actually for you folks. This has real dollar values associated to it. So, Village of Champlain VAS value calculator, based on 2013, the Village of Champlain spent $11,313 with EJP. I rounded it up to $11,500 just because it made all my math much easier. Because we have about 70 VAS accounts, we, and we've been doing this for about 20 years now, we know that your estimated inventory, if we were to go out there and take a dollar and do the inventory and do the dollar value, we know that your, your inventory is roughly about twice your yearly purchases. It's just empirical data that we've collected over the last 19 years. And we're usually, as I told Greg today, we're not more than 4% or 5% off. It's just, if, if you guys sign this thing and we do the inventory, I would be willing to bet that's where your inventory will come in at. It just happens that way. So, I went down this thing this morning and I aired, everywhere I went, I aired on the side of being completely conservative just so I wasn't gonna try to sell you guys on a false bill of goods. If anything, this number over on the value side should be much higher. But, here we go. A complete inventory. This is me going in there. This isn't anybody else. This is my time going in there. I'm gonna do a complete inventory of all your Public Works supplies. And I say, one person at $600 a day, times one and a half days, I'll be so lucky if I can get this inventory done in a day and a half. It'll probably be one, two, two and a half days. But again, it's a value to you because I doubt that you have 100% physical inventory ever done out there. So, your initial credit on the overstock, as I said, we're gonna have three piles. We're gonna have the junk, we're gonna have the stuff that you're gonna keep and you're gonna have the good stuff that you're gonna return. Typically runs about 10% of what your inventory is and that's including, that's the two piles, the junk and the stuff that's going back for credit. So, I said, if your inventory level is 23,000, that you get about 2,300 that you're gonna see as an initial credit. So, you're already gonna start out with a credit, which means your first $2,300 in purchases are just wiped away by your credit. The product is entered as it is used and it's received and received, so the inventory are always current. I said, and again, I have been very, very conservative. I said a half, Mike spends a half an hour a week running out, figuring out what he's got there for inventory, calling me, calling whoever, and making sure his inventory is right. I spent time as a superintendent, I know a half an hour a week isn't even close, but again, conservancy. So, and, so over a year's time, it equates out to $26 an hour, or 26 hours, and I just put his burden rate in at 30. I have no idea what he makes, nor do I wanna know. But a burden rate with labor and benefits, so there you have it, $780. Weekly refills, bringing items to minimum levels. What we found is if you let us manage your inventory and I let your inventory fall until it gets to a minimum level and then I replenish it, you are less inclined to have that big splurge order. The, the, you know, you start to, if I was to let him run out of something, he's like, oh, I never wanna run out again, you better give me a dozen. Well, a dozen is probably what you use in three years' time. But if I gave you three, it would probably last you for the entire year. So, by letting us manage your inventory and replenishing when you get to a minimum level, you basically keep your inventory in the, in the bottom range of where it's supposed to be instead of having 25 or 30 or something out there. That will never happen. So, what we usually see is your yearly spending actually goes down about 10% on what you normally spend on supplies. So, that's in there. The management software and product training, the least expensive one I could find out there is $500 for the inventory management. Ours, because it's licensed throughout the company, doesn't cost us anything. We pass it on to you as an additional user. But if you were to buy an inventory management software program, the least expensive one I could find is about $500. And then they want training is, I said, assume it's free, but we all know training's not free. If you buy software from somebody, they're gonna come and train you and they're gonna charge you for it. Return fee, return, no restocking. Again, I told you there's no restocking. I assume one large project a year, you know, you do your paving and you've gotta buy a bunch of manhole risers, valve box risers. I don't know, maybe you're gonna run a water line to a new building that's going up and down. You're gonna do it yourself. You're gonna order a bunch of stuff because you don't wanna run out in the middle of a project. And at the end of the year, or end of the project, you're gonna say, Mike, I didn't use this, 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 and this. We're gonna say, fine, we'll send a truck over, we'll clean it up, give you the credit for it. I just figured that $5,000 in one, one project, 10% of it's left over, that's $500 and you save 25% from not getting a restocking fee. You can take or leave it, it's $125. Pricing locked in for a year. Assume, it assumes I have just a 4% inflation rate on yearly purchases and I cut that in half. So, again, I'm just being conservative, but it's, it's there. Two-hour emergency service calls on A items. Again, those are the times that you run out of that thing and you call me and, or you, saves you having to run around or one of your guys running around. I figured twice a year for an hour, you're running around finding stuff that you should have on the shelf. It probably happens. It probably happens more than that, but-
We wish.
But, yeah. So, anyway, there's a dollar value associated with that. Again, the biggie, the 10-year warranty on purchases. I looked up this morning, I looked up extended warranties, I looked up from Lowe's, I looked up from Home Depot, I looked up from car manufacturers. About the best I could find was about the quarter, a quarter, a quarter of the purchase price for a five-year. That's about the most anyplace gives you for an extended warranty, five or six years. So, I just carried a tenth of your annual purchases. So, we all know that that $1,150 is probably way low of what that benefit's worth, but again, I've just carried it. We already went over the leak locating services, the OSHA. And then the one emergency call. I've never actually had an emergency call here, but when I say never, I'm gonna knock on wood because the last time I did that, I got called out Super Bowl Sunday to find a water leak. In the pouring rain, which changed to ice, similar, night similar to nine. So, so I said, I assume once every other year, you're gonna call me. And our normal emergency call-out fee is 300 bucks, which is pretty cheap actually. And that's waived as part of this program. So, if you bring it all down, you see that I've got $10,985 in benefits there. That was fairly conservative. I would say the order of magnitude, that might even be half that. So, I mean, you could, if you were to take advantage of everything in this list, which in a perfect world, that's great. You know, not everybody takes advantage of every single service that's offered under this program. But you've got a $11,500 yearly purchase and a 10, almost $11,000 benefit. So, you did the math. Thank you. Questions?
So, what do you cover equipment-wise? I mean, what are all the things in the bag that you would be inventorying?
I would be inventorying anything that we would sell, basically.
Would you sell?
Yes, and that's a lot. We carry over 20,000 items.
So, you're talking from tools on to everything to do with water and, and that's what my question is, does this include tools?
We do sell tools and we have sold tools to this village. So, if, if they want those included in their inventory, absolutely.
Mostly the water stuff, hydrants and-
Hydrants and valves.
I knew all that, I just didn't know whether it includes all of the tools.
Yeah, it can, it can. I mean, that's-
If you're on a regular basis.
You know, tools break, so I mean, you know, it's, it's, it's a little different. A little, you have to use your common sense as, you know, you're not gonna get a 10-year replacement warranty on-
That's what I was asking.
Yeah, no, you know, fool me once, shame on you, you know. This is more to cover defects in, in, in workmanship than it is tools of ignorance. Because, you know, I've seen the folks up at the border try to tighten a hydrant by putting a four-foot bar onto an existing wrench and then backing the truck into the four-foot bar and keep on backing until the hydrant was closed.
Are you kidding?
No, no, I watched, watched it happen.
Then they wanted us to fix it.
And then they did, they, they didn't, didn't stop until the hydrant broke, you know. Yeah, it was a wedge, it was a four, piece of four by four wedges in the bottom. But anyway, it also broke the hydrant wrench, it broke the rod, it broke everything. So, I mean, that's why we don't really, you have to use a grain of, I don't know, I won't say common sense, but I'll say you have to take it with a little bit of decency when you ask for warranty on tools.
Mike, I have a question.
Sure.
You, you're gonna come in and you're gonna do the initial inventory and everything's gonna go into software. How is that gonna be managed? Is Mike going to go into the software every time they pull something off of his shelf?
Yes, yes.
And it's, so is everything gonna be barcoded, if you will?
No, he's gonna, he's gonna go in and he's got a part number. He already looks at our, in our catalog list and he actually gives me, more often than not, he'll give me the part number of the stuff he needs. And he's gonna go into this inventory management system and he's gonna type in, okay, it's gonna come up as a blank screen. He's gonna type in, I used two of this part number. And when he does, it's gonna, the quantity's gonna show up and it's gonna adjust from this quantity at the top of the screen and it will automatically adjust. When he gets done at the end of the day of everything that he's used, he's gonna post, it's gonna post that quantity and it's gonna adjust. And the next morning when he comes in, he's gonna have a report generated because that's what it does, it generates the next day. And so, when I come in every week, I should see five or seven, depending on how we set it up, inventory adjustment reports.
Okay, and that was my next question, is how often are you gonna look at that to know the min and max?
One, one week. And, and this program, after two or three months, we may say initially, okay, you need six valve box tops here, all times. After three months, I might say, geez, Mike, you've got six here, you haven't used one in six months. Let's cut that number down to three. So, I'll give you a credit for three. And so, what we do, and, or, we might say, oh, you need a case, you need, you need six water meters here on your shelf. And I come in one week and he's used three. I'm like, oh boy, let's get closer, I gotta get some more. And then I come in two weeks later and he's used four or five more. I might say, geez, Mike, you know, you've, you've got a minimum order point of three and we've dropped below it twice in a month, you know, we probably oughta boost that up. It's a working partnership.
And if there's something that we need or another municipality needs that has it, they can get it and then replace it.
Switch as well.
Right, yeah, absolutely.
Service management.
Yeah.
Now, that two-hour response time for an A-list item, what if Mike's made a mistake? Or maybe not even Mike, but another member of the staff pulls some things they need to fix up.
Happens all the time.
Right.
Happens all the time.
So, does that still qualify because they- So, does that still qualify because they forgot to take it out of the system, but we ran out and now we have an emergency and we need it?
So you're saying you need something, you think you've got it on the shelf and then you come to go out there and get it and you, and you incorrectly, that will probably, it's got to get through two sets of eyes, number, number one. He's got to enter it in wrong and then I've got to go out there and check it, which I have to do every month. So unless it happens within a month, I'm not saying it could never happen, but it would be very hard for your inventory to get off that much on a specialty-type item.
And if it's on the A-list, even if it's one we use, when you get the hold, if you needed three of them and you only had one of them, say how many you used in a whole, it's still on that same list.
Yeah, I mean, and it's a two-hour response time, so, I mean, worst-case scenario, it's a water break and you think you've got something and you go to pull it and it's, there's a boo-boo that's happened and you really don't have it, so you're going to, in two hours, that's what it takes me to go over to Burlington and hit a part and get back.
Sometimes you dig it and you find out it's a different kind of pipe.
Right, and that happens, that's a frequent...
It's different band.
Yeah.
As best as core versus, AC pipe versus Beftal iron or, once you get to the pipe, it's not that kind of pipe, it's Lecan and it takes a different...
Or the plants say it's eight-inch and you dig down and it's six-inch, you know, stuff.
So if you're here once, once a week, how often, is there a, you know, a regular period of time where you do physical inventory as well?
Uh, I have to do an inventory a month.
Once a month?
Yeah.
But you're here every week?
Mm-hmm.
Eyeballing.
More than that, usually.
Oh, I'm here, I'm here anyway. I mean, I've usually stopped in, I mean, like I said, I live...
Once a month.
Well, I'm here until they get used to it, you know, out of habit, you're just taking what you need and not...
Right.
Saying, "Okay, I took that." I mean, it's, it's going to be a retraining process.
It will be, it's, it's a, it's a, yes, there will be a learning curve...
Right.
With regard to entering, making sure that the inventory, both used and received, gets entered in correctly.
Right.
But, I mean, he will, basically will be the same as the entering and receiving we do on a larger scale at our store locations. It's the same, same exact software, same, same learning curve, same process and it's...
But I think his once-a-month physical inventory is...
Well, yeah, I'm just, you know...
Right, that's what I said, it's got to go through two sets of eyes, it would have to go through his, absolutely. Good, it's a great point. Your inventory is only as good as a person, especially when it's computerized, it's only as good as a person's data. Yes.
I get it, my finger's going over here. So Mike's on vacation for two weeks.
Mm-hmm.
Is, if we let him away that long.
In a perfect world.
Now, is this, is this software only installed on his computer or is that program accessible for Juanita? Like, is she going to be able to access, because obviously he's going to take vacation and things are going to happen and he's gone.
Well, I mean, I'm assuming Juanita would have access to Mike's computer.
Well, that's what I, but I'm, what I'm wondering is it...
So she could be trained at the same time.
Yeah, but is it, is it a program that, how do I want to state this? That's in a, in a shared location on a C drive or something where she could do it from her desk or is it actually physically on one computer and you have to go to that computer?
You know, I don't really know the answer to that question. I, I, just based on my experiences with the customers that I had when I worked in Vermont, the public works superintendent was the, was the one that had it on, on their computer. Could it be on a different computer? Sure. But I think he had, all the other superintendents had somebody underneath them that they could either, A, they had trained with them, so there was a backup, or had a clerk that came in and did the training. Typically, if he's gone for two weeks...
Well, it's not going to happen, so we can throw it out.
Well, no, but life, life happens.
If he's gone for two weeks, the material, number one, he's probably not ordering anything because he's gone.
Right.
So there's no material coming in, so there's no adjustments in. And if he's, so the only adjustments out would be what they used in his absence.
Which they could write down.
Which they could write on a piece of paper and then when he comes back in, he could make a one-time adjustment and you're back to, back to square.
I just, I think of vacations, I think of, you know, illnesses occur, family emergencies occur, somebody, you know...
Oh, absolutely. I mean, I'm...
Well, Juanita and Mary have access to all the, all the passwords and all the computers back here, anyway, I mean, the whole...
Well, having access, but knowing how to run this. I think we definitely should have a backup.
It's as much as a phone call, anyway, being close by makes a difference. Well, even like the water break we had about 100, he was here, you know, somebody to stand by in case we needed, you know.
I'm, you know, I can, I can be here to, we're, we're going to train whoever wants to be trained. So if you want to have six people here on inventory management training on the software, great, you know, it's, it's just a matter of, it, the, the training, really, I mean, I don't expect more than a couple, couple days and you will have the full end of the system.
Anything else to add?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you very much. Continue with this discussion, any resolution?
Do you need a motion to, yeah. I propose, I propose a motion to, to sign this agreement to, to end the contract with this company.
I'll second that.
Inventory management program. I have a couple copies of the agreement if you want to produce it real quick.
We have it.
Do you have any more copies of it? Any other discussion matters, mayor?
No, I'd like, you know, us to develop, you know, as I said, inventory is only as good as the process of taking in and out of stock. Whether we come up with a form for the guys when they grab something off the shelves, you know, you have paper there, they fill out the item number and they drop it into a basket or something on your desk, so it's, got all that?
There's a blank, you can actually do a print screen from this software, from this inventory management software and it actually will give you quantity, part number, description and used in a, and then a note section, so you can, if you used it on Elm Street, you can write it in that I used it on Elm Street. You can just do a print screen and this is what we do at our locate, we do it at our stores. We put it right up in, on the way out to the warehouse, so that if we go out and grab something real quick, because UPS comes, you haven't even had time to receive it in yet and you're selling it out the door, so you just write it in.
It's going to be a matter of just basically retraining everybody that they're, they just need to get used to it and if, if forms and things are readily available for them, they'll, they'll use them.
Yes, once we get, the system is going to be great.
And I don't, I don't know that we've mentioned this prior to this discussion, but this is renewable yearly, so every year it's renewed.
As long as you stay on it, like your work is to stay, if you're, if you're, I don't want to do it anymore, then you lose it.
That's understandable.
Now, the town's not part of this process.
Not, not yet.
I was, I was just going to say that in this water, wastewater project, we're talking about $18 million, $18 million with the points here that we can get rid of the town.
It's like your credit card points in your, you know, that's, that's, believe it or not, that's what people have used it for.
Doing it for vacations and...
I dealt with, the town is, the village of St. Johnsbury over in Vermont and they put, they had a, a project of equal magnitude and they bought all of their stuff through their VAS contract. And they, I believe, they had enough points, so they actually took their public works employees to the Washington, Mount Washington Resort for a weekend. And that's like $1,000 per person per night, but that's what they did.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion matters? We have a roll call, please.
Trustee Trumley.
Aye.
Trustee McFetrich.
Aye.
Trustee Trumley.
Aye.
Trustee Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Martin. Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike, thank you for your time.
I will be in touch, we'll be doing probably an inventory next week, soon as I, I'm actually on vacation this week, but I...
It's only Monday, why wait, go next week?
Let him have his vacation.
I had to use up, I had 100 and...
Tell Mike about it.
18 hours of vacation that I have to use between now and the end of the year, or else I'd lose it, so.
118 hours between now and the end of the year?
Yeah, so do the math, yeah.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we'll see you.
Okay, with your regards to elections?
Yes, please.
Tuesday, December 31st is the first day that individuals may sign independent nominating petitions.
Okay.
And...
Will I have some ready?
And, and February 4th is the first day to file any independent nominating petition, And the 11th is, February 11th is the last day to file petitions for the elections.
So we'll have some of those ready?
Yep.
Very good, thank you. January 4th. Village's third annual tree lighting ceremony was held Saturday, December 7th to the light of all who could attend. The music and caroling was great, thanks to John and Jenna Lee Cunnings, who did an excellent job getting everyone involved, especially the children, who sang an enthusiastic rendition of the 12 Days of Christmas. Our thanks to Santa, who spent some time talking with the children, handing out candy canes, an enjoyable evening must have by all. We look forward to our fourth annual tree lighting ceremony next year. Some special thanks are in order. Without the continued generous support of contributors like Pumpkin Donuts, Poleros, Kenny Drugs, Border D Grocery, and Price Chopper, these community events would be very difficult to have and enjoy. Thanks to our community sponsors for your continued support. We, as a board, would also like to extend our thanks to Juanita and Mary, making sure the event would be held. Juanita made very, a lot of phone, phone calls here for us and, and folks just opened up their arms and said, "Hey, come get it." Another special thanks to Mike Golicar, Jimmy Andres, Robert Pulsifer, for the great job lighting up Boccat Park. Nothing but compliments was heard about the efforts put forth by the Village DPW crew. Mike, thank you. A reminder that there is to be no parking on Village streets from midnight to 6:00 AM until April 15th, so that plowing and sanding can safely be accomplished. Your attention to this restriction is greatly appreciated. Another reminder, water meters will be red starting this week or next week, depending upon the weather, and will be mailed on December 31st. It is extremely important that these bills be paid on time to avoid warning notices, shut-off notices, and having to deal with the possibility of having the service shut off due to non-payment. Water and wastewater services are essential and like your electric bill, your phone bill, your cell phone bill, your cable bill, non-payment means the service will be terminated. We have done that. This time, we will continue in the future. Another wastewater reminder, please do not flush the so-called disposable wipes down the toilet. They do not break down, they clog up the system and cause some very expensive repairs at the wastewater station. You will notice our new sander is now in the village, it has been used effectively on the streets, starting today, and it will save us, I think, a lot of, a lot of effort with the larger snowplow. I would like to wish everyone safe, joyous holiday season and a happy 2014. I would also like to request an executive session to discuss personnel issues at, towards the end of this meeting. That's all that I have. Trustee Trumley, let's start on this side.
All right. I echo Mayor Martin in the, the kudos to everyone who was involved with the tree lighting ceremony. It was absolutely beautiful. Of course, Mother Nature actually cooperated and it was, it was quite a lovely evening. But without the dedication of the crew and the office people, things like this could never go on, so. Also, the lights over in the area where the new playground is going to be, it's wonderful. It, it looks so nice to see that lit up again. That's all I have.
That skating rink will be set up.
Yep.
Get a cold spell, we can get it flooded and hopefully be ready for Christmas vacation for the kids. We'll back them all up.
I need to...
Anything else? Trustee McFetrich?
Well, I put out word that we were looking for a teen, teenage resident of the village to be the liaison team board and Andrew Visconti, who is a sophomore at Northeastern Clinton, said that he would like to do that. So I asked him to come to the January meeting and he's going to talk to the other youth in the village and see what kinds of suggestions and ideas they have and he's going to just do a brief presentation during the public part and then I tell him he doesn't have to stay for the rest of the meeting. So he's excited about doing that. And as far as that, if there are other people who would like to do that, I think Andrew would want to have someone else too. The plan for the Village of Champlain Culture Series is moving along. The first offering is January 16th. It's going to be at 6:30 at the Samuel de Champlain History Center. The title of the presentation is "The Ku Klux Klan and Confronting the Franco-Americans in the 1920s." Sounds pretty interesting in this area. That's going to be presented by Dr. Mark Ritchie from SUNY Plotsford. And I also have a verbal agreement from Elizabeth Cohen, who is another professor at Plotsford State. She just had a book chosen by Oka, I don't know if you read about that, but she'd like to come up and do like a book talk and talk about being an author and, and then another couple, Roger and Marilyn Reynolds, who just moved to Ross's Point last year from New York City, they're very high-level musicians, would also like to perform. So that's three things. So I'm thinking maybe four to six for the year, we'll see. So if you have any ideas or anyone else has any ideas, let me know, seems to be a lot of interest. We'll see how it goes. I'm excited.
Will there be a book signing as well?
Yeah, I told both of those people if they had books to bring them and that they could sell, sign them and sell them. And then thanks for everything that you and, and your crew have done. Mike, it's just amazing to me, I'm out a lot and I see so many people talking about the playground, they're talking about the disc golf, I see people playing it, the decorations are beautiful, the lights are great, and then thanks Mayor Martin for all that you've done to, you know, everything together. I know you work very hard. Thanks for keeping him aligned. All right. I just hear a lot of really good things about the village and I know I've only been involved in it for 20 months, but I'm very impressed with, with people who are running this place.
Thank you. Trustee Trumley?
I've got to echo what hopefully they said about the, the park and the decorations, but I had several people come to me and, and comment the park, it's a nice job decorating, they thought it was outstanding. And let's see, a couple announcements, mark your calendars, Christmas caroling and hayride at the Knights of Columbus, December 22nd, starting at 5:00 PM. So that'll be the, what we've had in the past few years there, I believe Santa will be attending as well. What time? It starts at 5:00 PM and it's a Sunday evening, December 22nd, so it's the, the annual caroling and hayride. And there'll be refreshments as well, apple clubs, cookies, coffee.
On cocoa.
Cold beverages as, as needed.
That's sponsored by the KFC.
Yes, it is.
Is it okay if I put that on the Champlain Community page on Facebook?
If I say it's sponsored by them?
That's fine, yes. This is open to the public, to everyone.
There's a lot of information running out that way, so I'll put that in there.
Yeah, that'd be great.
December twenty-second at five.
Yeah, it starts at five. It usually lasts a few hours, does several trips. Yeah, last year was a little cold, wasn't it? I think it was last year.
Yeah, a couple of years of cold.
Yeah. And another thing to mark your calendar for, for next month, and I'll bring it up again next month's meeting, we'll be holding another blood drive at the Knights of Columbus, January thirteenth. It should be on Monday, from three to six PM. So I like to announce that a couple times, because some people go down and donate, and I try to keep track. You know, donate every eight weeks, so it helps to know. Might save somebody a trip to Plattsburgh if they're intending to go. And other than that, I'd like to wish everybody Merry Christmas, and a Happy New Year.
Thank you. Trustee Gary?
Okay, coming time for the decorating contest again. That will start next Sunday through... Oh, good. Through next Friday, and I was just informed that we have movie tickets as prizes this year. Woo-hoo! So, get out there, put the effort in. I know it said in the paper to turn your lights on by seven o'clock. If you can get them on earlier, that, that would be nice. But throughout the week, make sure they're on, because it does take several days to get through, and sometimes requires going back a few times to get all of the coverage. So if you could do that, that would be great. And we'll get that in the paper before Christmas, so that people can go out and see it. Because I know some people take their decorations down the minute midnight strikes on Christmas Day, so. Give you an opportunity to go out and see the great houses. So I appreciate all those who have already started decorating their homes. The village is looking quite beautiful, and the park does look incredible. My granddaughter just brags that it's how wonderful it is, so when you have a little kid saying that the lights are cool, so that's good. Yes, the three categories are best overall display, so that includes how your home looks, daytime hours, as well as nighttime hours. Then we have a category for the best nighttime presentation, that is your light-up display, which your home doesn't look as exciting with the lights off, so that's the difference. And then your daytime display, so if your home looks incredible without the lights on. So we started that last year, and that seemed to cover a little bit more area and variety for the prizes. So we will do that. We'll continue to be moving forward for grants. A new round of grants come out with the first of the year. Mike, I want to get with you and see where we stand with equipment and where we can focus in, you know, specifically on items. A lot of these respond better when you're saying specifically what you're going to get with it. So if we can narrow some things down, that would be great. But I won't be writing those till after the New Year.
Ready for the warm?
No, we don't want to wait till it's warm, because then the money's gone, so January, February, big months for writing playground grants. And, and that is it for me, and Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, and please stay safe, and remember your families, and those who don't have families at this time of year. For anyone who's looking for volunteer opportunities, please don't forget the elderly in our nursing homes, who have, many of them have no one. If you have a few hours of time to spare, go visit some folks and put a smile on their face, and really, truly experience the true meaning of Christmas. Thank you.
Thank you all. Have the report from the Department of Treasury, please.
Everybody has their expense reports for November, which is our half-year mark.
Good, too.
You'll notice that the warrant is quite large this time.
Our warrant includes our retirement, plus our roof replacement. So next month, we will have to be transferring funds.
Motion to approve the warrant?
We have, we have some additional invoices, and one of them is misquoted. One of the direct energy bills for two hundred and eighty-six sixty-one should be F eighty-three twenty point four.
Where is that?
On the additional bill.
Eighty-three?
F eighty-three.
F eighty-three twenty point four. It's the water plant for two eighty-six sixty-one.
I make a motion to accept the warrant with the additional invoices in a total of eleven thousand, six hundred, thirty-six dollars and seven cents, with the changing of the code from G eighty-three twenty point four to F eighty-three twenty point four.
For a second?
Second.
Discussion? Notice the cost of cement, concrete. Four hundred and sixty-nine dollars, and up above, there's an Ace Hardware bill, forty-seven fifty-two. Those are, those are charged to the playground account, to the playground, that we have set up in the bank. Trustee, other word? Do a roll call, please.
Trustee Trombley?
Aye.
Trustee McPetrich?
Aye.
Trustee Trombley?
Aye.
Trustee Gary?
Aye.
Mayor Martin?
Aye. Anything else from the Department of Treasury?
Nope.
Report from the superintendent, please.
Yep, we've been staying rather busy. Our equipment's ready for the winter. We have a few water issues. Took care of some leaking water meters. We had one emergency shut-off or water line, water line that broke. Somebody had broken it inside. They took care of it, and then we turned it back on. We had to dig a shut-off over the former pool at the store that's being renovated. Somebody, I think it's already moved in there, but the outside, but they had to change the valve inside, and it ran and threw up the ground, so I have to make sure that's that. We made a turnaround on Mill Street, so we don't have to back out of there with the crawl truck. We talked with the people that are, are down in there, and they agreed that we could, no problem, we could do the turnaround, so we cleaned it out a while ago, you know, pushed the back of the motor, make sure there's no steel or anything there. We've been using that, or we will be using that as a turnaround. We did ride out instead of backed out. We're still trimming brush and trees where it would be. Swing sets have been cemented, and it is usable. It's a little chilly right now, but it is usable. As long with, along with the frisbee golf course, we got all the pads board for the, for the course, so that's complete. And I know we, I haven't seen anybody this week, but I did see some out there last week playing. We did some ditching over on Moore Street, and on South Street as well. We have the water backed up to a fellow's yard, and we ended up ditching part of South Street, as well as cleaning dishes on Prospect. We repaired, as you've seen, we repaired the lights in the, down at the playground. We had to put in the ballast and bulbs, and the ballast were bad, and they were mercury, which were out a lot like three years ago, we came to Kartsport, so we switched them to a metal A-line. So everything was new, basically, in both of those lights. We took care of those, and as well as the... We fixed the lights over at Pocat Park. Thought I'd have them both fixed Friday, but unfortunately, Saturday, one of them didn't work, but it was staying there, so. Other than that, just odds and ends, odds and ends stuff, Christmas decorations are up through the village, and I wanted to say thank you to Carl Smith for letting us use his bucket truck, so I could repair. There's quite a few electrical issues on the boxes and the poles are repaired, and we're able to get all the decorations up. So I want to say thank you to Carl for, for that. Other than that, just odds and ends stuff, and I'd like to wish everybody a happy and safe Christmas and Happy New Year. Got any questions, Tony?
No, thanks, Mike.
And also, I want to say thank you to the DPW guys out there that were freezing and doing some decorating. They did do a good job, and they spent more time down there putting lights up than I did, but I was up in the bucket truck set.
It's colder up there, right?
Yeah, a little bit.
Questions for Mike? Thank you, Michael. Correspondence, please.
Letter to Phoebe Dumanell, denying his request for reduction in his October two thousand thirteen lot of sewer bill. Correspondent ran around that trash service, quote dumpster, for quote for dumpster service. Letter to Stacy Dooley, asking that his property at ten eighty-eight Route Nine be brought into compliance by removing the truck box and clearing the porch of junk and debris. Letter to Nada Scientific regarding the box crates and pallets to be removed from the property at thirty-nine Butternut Street. Correspondent from Pendel France regarding his property at twenty-nine Seer Street. And the JCEO monthly report.
You can see that he'd been very busy.
Very busy.
Just look at the household received services.
I know. Are there still law on food here at, at this, this year?
Well, you have to ask her. I know that that back room is cleaned out quite a bit.
Yeah, I really don't doubt who it was.
And usually we get some, there's some food drives that usually take place.
There is one going on at school. Yeah, I know. I know, it's the one that I always ran, so. Try to make sure it comes over here.
I know she has, um, she has twenty Christmas baskets that she is doing. Normally, what happens is the JCEO gives the families, they get the Christmas bureau a voucher to go get their Christmas baked things. Unfortunately, this year, they, they're doing Christmas Magic, which covers Champlain and Ross's Point. They do their own. They had, they worked to like a hundred and three families last week. Because they went separate with the Christmas Magic, JCEO no longer supports their baskets. They will have five senior baskets, and she has enough donated turkeys for twenty more baskets. A little hard to pick and choose.
Yeah.
This board group's getting involved, picking up extra services. Anything else on the correspondence? We've addressed the old business under new business. You'll notice in correspondence number two, gentleman who owns the business stopped in, asked a few questions about what we were paying. It was a local person, and mentioned that we now, under a monthly obligation of ninety-five dollars to value sanitation. I didn't tell him that, but that's what we are. And he has offered us the quote, two-yard dumpster pickup once a week, which we have now. A two-yard dumpster picked up weekly at eighty dollars a month, which is not a lot, but it is less than what we are paying now, and we're dealing with a local person. So, uh, does the board wish to address this, or do we wish to address this?
Is it covered recyclable? Anybody recycling with that, anybody?
I brought that up.
Are you taking here?
I don't think that it does.
I can't, I can't believe we don't do any recycling.
All your papers recyclable.
Yeah.
Ninety percent of everything goes here. Garbage is recyclable right now.
Cardboard is recyclable.
I think that Casellas is probably the only one around that's really doing the zero sort.
So we don't recycle anything?
We shred our paper, we recycle cardboard.
What do you do with the shredded paper?
It goes to the garbage. In front of the clothes.
It goes in the garbage?
There's a place for it to go at, at the...
At the convenience station?
Yeah, there's a place for shredded paper.
Aren't we required to? We're required to take care of our...
I thought we were required by New York City to recycle.
It's volunteer.
Used to be. I don't know what we have to really recycle, though.
Just the shredded paper, really. Cardboard, we already do. I mean, we don't really make any other...
Cardboard, your paper, most of your garbage now.
No plastics?
Not, not at the landfill, not, not at the convenience station, unless they change their policies. When we used to use the convenience station, there was so little that we could recycle there, other than newspapers or...
They do the cans, glass, cans, glass, plastic, two and twos, cardboard, one and two, shredded cardboard.
But like with, with Casellas, we fill in two weeks, we fill the recyclable container, I mean, literally, like squishing it down, and our trash is...
Oh, exactly. Our recyclable is...
That's zero sort, right?
Yeah, because it takes, they take just about everything, and the landfill or the...
The only thing they don't take the landfill now is box. They take everything else.
But like your plastics?
Yeah, they...
But only certain ones, right?
Ones and twos.
Yeah, see, they, Casella takes ones for seven.
Eight now, one to eight.
It's plastic, I put it in the barrel, they take it.
Anyway, they do.
Anyway, if you're, if you're not recycling, then I guess it's, um, you're the point, but... And I don't think we want to get into the cost of having Casellas.
No, no, we could get a quote and have something comparative.
Household garbage, mostly, you know what I mean? It's mostly papers that we...
I think in the past, we've got quotes from, from Casella. And they were higher. That's why we were out.
But their rates have changed dramatically, Casella. I mean, they were staggeringly higher than all of the garbage services, and now they're the most reasonable because of this recycling component.
I, I would, I would make a motion to get a quote from her, and have an additional quote comparative. And it, and it would be an advantage if we could do the recycling. We don't, really, recycling paper, whatever you have. A lot of the stuff is garbage, it's stuff we pick up on the side of the road, you know, oddball stuff, plastic, this kind of stuff, but... It's not like household where we're using...
No, I agree.
So you're shredding the paper, but then the paper just goes to the landfill?
A lot of it goes to the landfill. If we ever run a dumpster, we put it right in the dumpster before it comes, you know, if there's room.
When Terry was here, he used to take it because it would burn.
Cardboard, we send it to Campex Building, because they press cardboard. When we get piled, then we just drop it off, and we go by, and they press it in bales and recycle it, yeah.
Well, I shred the paper, we can just pile bags, and then when we get, just take a ride to the landfill.
Put it in the, in the...
What's that?
We get a paper.
Yeah, something like that.
We'll call, we'll call and see what the rate's at.
Okay.
So can we just table this until January?
We sure can.
I do like the idea of giving a local.
I do, too.
Better to give a quote than more.
Right. Right, but if we could save on what we're doing now, even. I see Mike had, um...
Yeah, I forgot, I got some purchases.
I was just gonna say, before we go into an executive session.
I have some purchases over there, just stapled it to the back of those seats, I forgot about them. Sorry.
Yeah, it was geared to us totally.
First one's for polymer, which... We need, we're almost out. I think we got contract at price, with that is a dollar seventy-five pound. That's for the wastewater plant. What do you give me now in order? It needs two drums. We should, we get, we use the two drums at a time. And that's where we always get it from, but I didn't know if I'd just give you guys a picture for that or not, because we're out.
Is this for wastewater?
Wastewater, polymer.
Well, probably not.
That's the only supply we get it from, yeah. I mean, we were locked in the last price. And I don't know if we was locked in the beginning of the year, but we gave them the four, and it's what we're going with.
Do you want second motions on these things? I make a motion to approve the purchase requisition for one thousand five hundred seventy-five dollars. Do you know how much the rate's going to be?
I don't.
Oh, okay, for one thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars plus freight for the polymer.
Does the company clean waters?
Yeah.
How about a G-8320.4?
Can I have a motion, do I have a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, anything else, Mike, on there, on this one?
On that one, no.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee McFetrich.
Aye.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
The next one is for heaters at the water plant. We've got two heaters, one in the chlorine room and one in the main, or the distribution pumps are, they're electric ceiling melt heaters, and we've been having issues, actually with both of them, one of them seemed cool in there this morning, wasn't equipped today. There, what's in there is like a fifteen hundred watt, they're small heaters and they run all the time. I did get a price from Ace, they were at two hundred and seventy dollars. Last week when I got some electrical stuff in Foxville at Champlain Valley Electric, I noticed they had some, the ones they had have two heat settings, it's four thousand, twenty-six hundred watt on low setting, four thousand on high setting with a thermostat, and they're two hundred and eighty-four dollars and seventy cents. Double heater per fourteen dollars. We actually, we need two of them, one for the chlorine room, because that one goes, one of the original heaters from way back, I don't know when, but it's antique, and it's quit completely. The other one has been getting these issues, it doesn't have been shutting off, it's just been running and running and running, so those both need to be changed, both heaters down there, and they're, it's gonna be five hundred and sixty-nine dollars and forty cents for two heaters. That's the only thing that heats the water plant.
Is that the only thing available to heat, is electric down there?
Yeah.
Is there gas down there?
Unless you put in a pump, no.
You have to go propane, right?
Yeah, there's no natural gas, no.
I don't think so.
I mean, we'll change something.
Would propane be more efficient?
I don't know, I'd have to look.
The initial cost would be much worth it.
Oh, the initial cost, yeah, I was saying the energy was.
Long-term.
I make a motion to approve the purchase order of two heaters, a cost of five hundred and sixty-nine forty from Champlain Valley Electric for the wastewater plant.
My second.
This is a five-year, I mean, one can heat it.
What kind of energy efficiency do these things get, though? I mean, electric things run all the time.
Electric heaters, it hasn't been in there since.
Well, I know, but just because it's been there doesn't mean it's the best.
But at the cost of propane, if you change it out and you go with propane, normally you have to have, you have to keep a certain amount, your bills are, you know, we have a, we use propane at camp, and you have to get a certain amount of electricity.
Well, I mean, if you want me to look that way, I can look into propane heaters there. I know that because it's heat, I don't know what it is right now, but it is cheaper because it's heat, you're using it for heat, I know if you have accidents, but I don't know, I'd have to look at the cost of heaters, I was looking just for replacement that was there, but I mean, that's up to you guys, if that's something, but I'm gonna have to do something because too much cost, we'll do something soon.
Well, even if it's just, I mean, staying electric, but more of the energy efficient electro heaters they have out there now as opposed to.
Oh, I'm sure this one's probably better than the one that's there.
Well, I'm sure, I'm sure. Well, that was my question, you know, what is kind of efficiency does this have, because there are some great electri, I mean, I've gone with a couple in our home to supplement.
Those, like the even beers or whatever.
Yeah, for, I mean, you don't see a difference in the electric bill at all.
I mean, I can look at something different, see, I was just looking at replacing what was there.
Right.
There was a ceiling melt.
I mean, it's dirt cheap, I get that, I just, but we know what the electric bill is down there, it's staggering.
That's why I was questioning, is there something more efficient in this?
I mean, we can look into putting, we'd have to put two, as far as heaters go, because it's divided up at chlorine room versus the other room.
Sure, right.
And I have to see what's acceptable for, you know, hot gas in the chlorine or.
Is there a safety issue with this, Mike?
Well, hey, I'd be looking into, like you said, the chlorine.
I'm asking.
With the propane there, there's.
Compatibility issue, I don't know.
Propane, but I'm just talking more energy.
I know the one that was in there, we used to use chlorine, but gas, and it's so rusted that, I'm sure that's, you know, ate them up over time, because we used to own gas.
I didn't see that freeze down.
Yeah, well, could we do a, could we do a motion that if Mike were to find something, set a limit, and that way we wouldn't have to worry about something freezing before we meet again?
I mean, we could.
In a month?
If you wanted to approve one, I could get one and put it in the chlorine room, but now where that's quit, because we can always use them somewhere, we use them, we use electro heaters in the lift station at Ashland Drive, we use the electric one up at the water tank, you know, little building, I mean, it can always be used somewhere or for a backup, but one of them has quit, one of them should be changed, but that's for you guys, what you.
Well, yeah, at that price, I mean, it's a great thing to have as a backup for any emergency situation.
Even if they were there and you did end up doing something else.
But in the meantime, something is gonna save us a little on our electric bill, we gotta really start being mindful of that nasty bill.
Put some oil there.
I agree.
But if you start freezing down there, there's gonna be.
Yeah, then you can.
Right, I mean, you need to get it now, but.
If it needs to be electric, I mean, if that's to, you know, if that's what.
I'll find out just about it.
What Amy's suggesting, that's kind of what I was leading to, is, is there something more efficient in the heat within these little portable guys?
There probably is, I'll have to see what the cost, that's the only, you know.
But for now.
How much it's gonna save.
But in the meantime, we need something down there.
I mean, we should get at least one and get it in the chlorine room, so we have heat, because we can always move it. These come with a whip you can plug in, those are hardware, it doesn't matter.
Right, doesn't matter.
It can be moved, if we need it somewhere else, if we want it put in the lift station somewhere, we'll have a backup.
Yeah, and if you find this is the only animal that's really fits the purpose, then go ahead and do it.
Because I don't know down the road, of course, it's a while down the road, but we, this water project goes through in the unit for the chlorinator or softening system, and they're gonna be adding, you know, everybody's down there, and I don't know, we would have to do something different at that time.
Yes.
You know, if we put another building here up, it's gonna have to be.
The building would be expanded, that's for sure.
Right, so I'm sure a different heating system's gonna go in of some sort, maybe get natural gas.
I still see for that place to get to.
Got a little, we got us covered still, but in the meantime, you know, we find something more efficient, it's gonna save in the first one or two months.
Right.
You know, in electric costs, so, but in the meantime, these are great for backup at this price, I mean, you can't.
Yeah, and you can use them until we.
We leave it cool in there anyway, you've got the water underneath which helps, but you don't, you know, you get twenty below the wind blowing for.
Which could be.
You don't want to take a chance of it freezing up.
Could be in a couple of weeks.
Then nobody has water.
And it blows the propane out when you have donkey.
Yeah.
But Mike, I don't know if you've heard, Mike just had a good point, was, you know, in this water project, there's gonna be some big changes down there, and we probably will end up running natural gas or something to provide.
So in the.
I know on the Moore Street, and it's, just from the end, it's blanked out, it's not down Moore Street, down there, you know, whether they would eventually go down that way is very possible, I know the same thing on the other side, on Meadow Lane, they don't have, which I'm surprised.
I'm surprised there.
But all the trailers, if there's no, I think eventually we're gonna see it there, because they're doing, they're just, they just finished well.
It's not, it's not on Chesnut.
It's not?
No one went for natural gas.
I didn't know that.
We don't have it on Chesnut, nobody went for it. Just switch over.
Isn't that was next to your park?
Okay. Unless he got hooked in.
I'm pretty sure.
And he got hooked on Butternut, but not on. They told me it wasn't there.
Yeah, I'm sure he doesn't. He's a, he's a, I'm sure.
So what's our decision here, one or two?
I think it's two.
Two.
We're going to, two.
Two, your motion.
I'm in.
Second.
And Tom's.
Purchase two, five sixty-nine forty.
Awesome.
Is this the correct code, F-8342?
I put on there, should be.
Yes.
That's why I asked.
I was looking to see if I might.
That's why I asked.
No, I did that tonight.
Okay, roll call, please.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee McFetrich.
Aye.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye. Any other new business before, before the board?
I make a motion for executive session.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, would like a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I have a motion to go back into the regular session?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, in executive session, the board has decided to, Mary Souza, raise a dollar an hour, and we'll revisit that in one year.
Nine months.
No, in August.
In August?
After one year.
After one year.
Editor one year anniversary.
Can I thank you for that?
What happens, what happens when we review for the budget, it's usually three percent for, I'm holding it to January first.
No, it's not till June.
Or June, excuse me, June first, that's when the raises will be done, than that.
Yeah. The board has also chosen to give Michael Jolker a five percent raise. Do we need to state the dollar amount for the record?
No, just have to say the percentage.
Okay, five percent, and we'll revisit that on a yearly basis. Any other business coming before the board?
Make a motion to adjourn.
We have a second.
Did somebody make these motions to?
Oh, yeah, we did.
I made the motion on both of them.
I think I seconded a lot of them.
Yes, Janet seconded both of them, I recall clearly.
Okay, I spoke so loudly when I did it, you weren't quiet. Okay, that's all I know.
All in favor of adjourn?
Aye.
Do you have a second?
Who motion, who motion for adjourn?